Testing one, two, three. This will be the October 16th, 2013 city council meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, October 16th, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilwoman Deenan for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Moment of silence, please. Amen and the pledge.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you. If you'd all please check your cellphones and make sure they're dialed down or turned off, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number three, citizens' comments. These are on non-agenda items. So the floor is open for citizens' comments. Karen Nunn, move on to agenda item number four, city council comments. Who would like to start?
I have none, thank you.
I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting on Monday night with the mayor, with Councilman Montanaro, and the city manager, I think John Stone also. We're all there. Interesting meeting. Northrop Grumman is really trying to develop their business opportunities in the Melbourne area and throughout the United States as well, but they anticipate that they're going to add between 1,000, maybe 1,200 jobs over the next couple of years to our area, which is going to be a big benefit to our economy. So things are growing there. It was overall a good meeting with good attendance by all the cities. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't have anything other than the inter-local agreement for the South Beaches Coalition is ready. It has been sent out to each of the cities, and that'll be on our next agenda.
Thank you.
Along with Mark's comments, Northrop Grumman is looking at bringing 1,200 new jobs into the area. That was part of the presentation that we had the other night, and it's, these are all high-paying, you know, high-paying jobs, engineers. It's a, it's a pretty good endeavor that they're undertaking over there. They're actually building a new building, so it was neat to listen to the presentation that was made. Also, on Friday, the 11th, I attended the FIT luncheon, and it was basically FIT's State of the Year address, and I never realized how large Florida FIT is. They have 16,000 students that operate out of that place, both online and on campus. I also didn't realize they have, in several airface, air force base installations, FIT has programs that they offer there, and master's programs. I also didn't realize that they were as internationally known as they are. They are one of the top schools internationally in aeronautics and engineering, and we have them in our backyard, so they bring a lot to, you know, our area here, and it was, it was pretty interesting to hear all of that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I also attended Space Coast League of City along with a lot of other meetings this past few weeks. One thing to bring up, many of you might have seen in the paper about the first response, that the county cut the first response. They've, I'm sure that they've put it back for this year, and what is going to happen is the League of Cities and the city managers are getting together to work on this first response money. So it is back in for this year. It shouldn't affect our budget for this fiscal year. Beyond that, we'll be into work, so that is a change from last time. Any further council comments?
Yes, sir.
Karen Nunn, moving on, city attorney's report.
(Inaudible).
City manager's report.
Hi. The first item I have is some announcements. We do have a save the date announcement for our annual Satellite Beach Founder's Day, that will be on November 2nd this year, from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. So please make sure you mark your calendars for that. That's one of our largest celebrations. Also, the Recreation Department is sponsoring a road rally on Saturday, October 19th, and there is still time for cars to join, so please contact our Recreation Department if you wish to do so. I included as an informational item the new solid waste management department, solid waste charges for fiscal year 13, '14. That's regarding both our assessments as well as our, the impact fees for new development. So if you have any questions on that, please just give me a call. Congratulations to our Vice Mayor Breimer, who has been appointed as goal team leader for the Fall Prevention for the 2014-2018 Florida Injury Prevention Strategic Plan being conducted by the Florida Department of Health. So congratulations to you on that. I know you, as well as our Chief Hughes, has been a leader in our community on that issue for, basically statewide, so that's very exciting. The Ocean Reef Beach Festival is being held at the Pelican Beach Park on Saturday, December 7th, so please mark your calendars for that. But really, the purpose of this was to let you know that the festival organizers are wishing to use our DeSoto A1A property as, in the area for parking, as well as, also supplement the event with staff time for both police, fire, and recreation. And I went ahead and proved both of those. I thought it was a little bit ministerial in nature, so I didn't think that was necessary to bring that to you for approval, but I did want to let you know that, that we will be supporting that event, both as approval as well as organizing. I had an action item on here, but I have had a request to move this as an agenda item for the next meeting, so we're going to go ahead and do that. I did want to mention that something that came up after the publication of the agenda, and that is the audit that Mr. Ellis's office provided to the press before they provided it to us. I did, I did want to, I was, I sent that to you as an email, and I had asked that we probably should get direction at the next CRI meeting on how to respond to that, but after reviewing it pretty extensively yesterday, I believe that we can respond to that pretty quickly, and that we should. So I think it would, I would like to move forward with just your general direction that you gave to me in responding to that issue and taking care of that issue, and if we could go ahead and do that, I would appreciate that. I do think we should get it out as soon as we can, and if you would like, I can meet with you individually and go over the response, so you understand what we're putting out.
I'm bewildered on what general response I haven't heard, and haven't had any discussion or any emails without any response to why this happened.
I sent you an email with that, and so that-
I saw the-
Okay, so that's what I'm talking about.
But I haven't seen any response.
That's what I'm saying, is we're developing it now, and I'd like your permission to go ahead and create that response, and then meet with you individually on that, and go ahead and get it out next week.
Counsel wishes.
Go. Do it. Depends on what the response is.
You'll be meeting later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we're going to move agenda item number eight in front of seven. Police Chief Jeff Pearson. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. I appreciate it. Never understand, because I need to have my back to anybody, so I apologize that somehow I had to give my back to you, but I'm trying to talk to everybody, say hi. It is my, just game's pleasure to announce two promotions within the Satellite Beach Police Department. Before I talk about those two promotions, I just want to say that a long time ago, I told you, to be successful and to be a part of a successful organization, you should surround yourself with very good, highly competent, qualified, educated, dedicated people. Get them the tools that they need to do the job, and leave them alone to do it. And I was fortunate enough when I started and took over as Police Chief, that Brad Howard already came up with the job, so I already had the puzzle in place, and now I have the ability to add to it, round it out, and continue to move forward with this. I'd like to call Commander Barrios up here. Commander Barrios was promoted to the rank of commander. He was a patrol lieutenant, and he was born in Lakewood, New Jersey, where he attended school, graduated high school, and went into the United States Air Force, serving for 20 years, and retiring in the rank of captain. During his Air Force tenure, he held positions as fletchie, helmet leader, team leader, first sergeant, superintendent of reports and analysis, non-commissioned officer in charge of law enforcement and hostage negotiator. So you can see where that experience certainly did well and continues on a daily basis to serve as well. Here in the Area of the Month, Officer of the Year, and Senior Non-Commissioned Officer of the Year, on top of all those responsibilities, he was more than recognized for outstanding work. He also received the Meritoria Service Medal, Air Force Achievement Medal, Air Force New Conduct Medal, Southwest Asia Service Medal, National Defense Service Medal, and Air Force Outstanding Leader Award. It took me six and a half hours to research all those and find what they meant, but I'm glad I did. He joined the Police Department in 1999, and his dedication to discipline helped him move forward. He was promoted to Corporal in 2001. If you pay attention to these things, I think it'll speak volumes of the ability that Commander Barrios has. Promoted to Corporal in 2001, Sergeant in 2003, Staff Sergeant in 2004, Lieutenant in 2005, and is now rank of commander. I think that speaks volumes. He is married to a beautiful wife, Rosie Barrios, from Tampa. They have five children, Mark Bellamy and Jennifer Melrose, Kate Lott and Alexis. And like I said, just to kind of counter a person that you can, you can imagine from what I just said, but I can tell you from a day-to-day basis, it's a pleasure to work with people that have the ability and the dedication, and it doesn't matter what time, it doesn't matter what pay, it doesn't matter what the task is, it just gets done, it gets done right, it's done professionally, the dedication, and folks, it's a great thing. Not only for the Police Department, but for the citizens, the council, and the other people that have graduated. So I'm very proud to make this promotion, and thank you very much, sir.
(Applause)
Commander, based on your success, the oral interview, my recommendation will be the support of our city manager, Ms. Courtney Barker, to inform her of your promotion to the rank of operations commander. This appointment is effective October 1st, 2013. Your promotion is based on your superior job performance, dedication, and the leadership role you play in Satellite Beach Police Department. In accordance with personnel policy, this promotion will be on a probationary basis for six months. Congratulations, best wishes, and continued success.
(Applause)
Lieutenant. The person who doesn't have a good name is, he's very good at being out there and making himself known, and that's one of the qualities that we like, is to have people in the community. The more people you know, the more people it'll do, and he exemplifies that. He's been promoted to the rank of patrol lieutenant from Staff Sergeant position, which was vacated when Lieutenant Barrios became the deputy commander. He was born in Wales, in the United Kingdom. Immigrated to the United States with his parents in the 1980s. He attended high school in Hoppell Beach, and graduated from Phillips College with a business degree. He then worked in the marketing field with IT, and he attended the police academy in 2000, which he was immediately given the class leader award, and that class leader was picked by the students in the class of all of the 40-some-odd people that were there, and that's a pretty significant distinction in itself. And then of course graduated in the communist class, and he has not let us down since. He joined Satellite Beach Police Department in 2000. In 2003, with the School Resource Officer. 2002, promoted to Corporal. 2003, he was Officer of the Year for developing the CANI program, which is not an easy task. Developed, researched, took it together, discussed the training, and then was the first one to do it. Found the dog, worked with the dog, and I cannot say how many hours, hours, hours and hours, hundreds of hours, that he put into that, not his own time, to develop the best dog possible, and that dog, to this day, is still regarded as one of the best animals in the state of the county. And that is coming from other people outside, and that's not just me. In 2004, the most distinctive thing that's happened in his career thus far. He was Officer of the Year for the capture of an armed murderer who killed a police officer in South Carolina and a convenience store clerk in North Carolina. This individual was apprehended while he was in a condominium after fleeing from the car with a machine gun. Him and his dog chased the person, put the machine gun, finally caught him at the top floor of the condominium. He was extradited back to South Carolina, where he's still waiting on death row. He's been sentenced, convicted to death, and is waiting on death row. 2007, he caught a large amount of marijuana that our Sheriff's Department had prepared in Sandy, and they were not able to find it. Two suspects were located, but they could not find the marijuana. They called Sergeant Fox, who came down there, and the dog found it within five minutes, and it was an awful lot of marijuana that may have been or gone unnoticed without the dog there, because it was at night, and you wait till the sun comes up, somebody finds it first, it doesn't always get turned in. He was promoted to Staff Sergeant in 2010, and assigned to the representative system built out in 2012, and of course was promoted to Lieutenant in 2013. He lives in Melbourne with his beautiful wife Anne, and his two sons Jimmy and Colin. Jimmy can't read, graduated from UCF, doesn't like to point at you here. Colin is fishing for the cubs. It says Little League, I'm not sure exactly if it's Little League or medium. Okay, problem.
(Inaudible)
And of course, his wife is dead and retired, and is now living at home with family and his companion, Rex. Darren says he enjoys boating, fishing, camping, golfing, tennis, and he's a supporter of the Miami Dolphins and a college football team. Do you want me to say it?
Oh, God, no.
Besides that, I promoted him anyway.
Darren, based on your success, the oral interview and my recommendation along with the support of our city manager, Ms. Courtney Barker, to inform you of the promotion to the rank of operations lieutenant. This appointment is effective October 1st, based on your superior job performance, dedication, and the leadership role you play in Satellite Beach Police Department. In accordance with personnel policy, this promotion will be on a probationary basis for six months. And again, congratulations and best wishes on your continued success.
(Applause)
Folks, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about these folks who are in the Police Department, and thank you all for being here, and I really would like to say, you, thank you.
Just thank you very much, and congratulations to the two officers. They do a great job for us in the city, and again, thank you. Moving on to what will now be agenda item number seven, I have some presentation of proclamations to get hand out. Okay, we have three official proclamations to give out tonight. One, I know the first one touches all, all of us. I don't think there's any person in this room who's not been touched by someone with breast cancer. And Melody, please step forward, Meli Arnaud, represent, and I'd like to give an official proclamation from the City of Satellite Beach, whereas breast cancer is one of the most common cancers diagnosed in the United States. More than 200,000 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year. That's one out of every eight women. And whereas, understanding the risk factors associated with the illness is essential to the prevention. Older women and those who, excuse me, those with a personal or family history of breast cancer are at greater risk of developing the illness. And whereas, the American Cancer Society raises money for educational programs, and the Susan G. Kromen Foundation raises money for the research and early detection, and whereas, the pink ribbon is the most prominent symbol of breast cancer awareness, and most countries, the month of October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The fight for a cure is a never-ending challenge that will one day save the lives of many. Therefore, I Frank P. Cutino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Bivard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2013 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you.
And thank you very, very much for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. (Applause) Doug?
Doug, thank you.
Thank you. This is the next proclamation from the City of the National Family Week, whereas the City of Satellite Beach recognizes the family as the fundamental unit in society and an essential part of its culture, society, and spiritual fabric that makes up our community. And whereas families provide children with the encouragement, support, and love they need to become confident, compassionate, and successful members of society. And whereas, by working together to strengthen our families, we build a nation of hope, opportunity for all. And whereas, parents should be the most prominent, excuse me, predominant and active figure in their children's lives, recognizing that by spending more family time together, they can develop positive and open relationships with their children and help them make positive choices. Now therefore, I Frank P. Cutino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Bivard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of October 27th through November 2nd, 2013, as National Family Week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. The next proclamation is National American Indian Heritage Month, and welcome back, Susan Huhm. Please come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the proclamation of the City of Satellite Beach for National American Heritage Month, excuse me, Indian Heritage Month. Whereas, the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by the indigenous American Indians. And whereas, the contribution of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas, their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of our rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas, Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognize, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush on August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Now therefore, I Frank P. Cutino, by virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of Satellite Beach, Bivard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 2013 as National American Indian Heritage Month.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. (Applause) Thank you. Okay. At this time, as the Chair of this meeting, I would like to take a five-minute break. That's fine. Okay, thank you. Well, five-minute break, and we'll come right back. Thank you. Yes. I'll do that. I gave him a pen, and- Is this what I designed it? Yes, right. To reconvene, the City Council meeting, October 16th. Agenda number nine is the next one, discuss, excuse me, take action on agreement with Bivard County for beach renervation. This will be on our next agenda. The county has not returned a signed agreement to us, and we really need that agreement to process this, or to, you know, work this agreement with them. So that will be on our next agenda. Courtney, you said you had a couple more announcements you needed to make before we moved on to agenda item-
I was just going to announce that, you know, the Fire Department Breast Cancer Awareness shirts are out, and you can buy those at the Fire Department. I didn't want to neglect the Fire Department and my city manager, of course. But I also wanted to let you know, since we were talking about first responder, on Sunday, I was at my church, at United Methodist Church, and the, we had a church member that collapsed during the service, and I'm new to this church, so none of the people really know that I'm the city manager, and when the Fire Department got there, they all talked about how fast we responded. So I just wanted to let you know that. That's a great story about the service that we provide, and considering that first responder funding is there, that's a demonstration about literally how fast we can get there for our citizens and save lives.
One other thing, I'd like to welcome the Boy Scouts here tonight. Thank you very much for coming, and good luck on your merit badge. Appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item number 10, presentation by the Space Coast Economic Development Commission. Courtney?
Thank you. When we became members of the Florida, the Florida Space Coast Economic Development Commission, you had asked that we, them to come, the staff to come and make a presentation to us about their initiatives, so they are doing that. It's a brief presentation, just to kind of give an overview of the services they provide to the counties, to the businesses. So Mr. Gray Warner is here. He is the Development Director, Business Development, Senior Business Development Director for the EDC, so I'll turn it over to him.
And Jennifer Schermer.
I'm here with Community Relations Press.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. First off, on behalf of, I'm getting rid of these slides. On behalf of the EDC, I want to thank you all for your investment in the EDC, as well as your participation and support of P4 Initiative, which we're working together on. At a time when budgets are especially tight, your support is greatly appreciated, and we look forward to working closely with the city. This next slide is essentially, I'm not going to go into great detail, I think most of you know a little bit about what the EDC does. We do focus a lot on the blocking and tackling of economic development, which is really relocation, business attraction. We do work with companies that are in the market for expansion, and we also work on retention. We also are involved in a number of policy issues that are both local and statewide. We are the point of contact for all state incentives, as well as obviously for local incentives.
Sir, could you pull that microphone closer to you, please?
I'm sorry. I'll try and speak.
Thank you.
One of the questions, I think you may have a great deal with, is where people from either the City of Satellite Beach or this county get their investment in the EDC. I don't know that historically we've done a particularly good job at helping people understand what we do, so tonight you're starting to see the kinds of things we're developing in your communities. What we did is we contacted Enterprise Florida, and we asked them to give us the results of all projects from January 1st, 2010, through this period of 2013. It's a very broad measure, but it's all calculated, so it's all point balanced. Most important projects actually do get a technical or qualitative industry, or QPI for short, and that's how we look at it. We used the numbers provided for the slide that we showed. The counties, when we looked at the top five, Hillsborough, Stansfield, Miami-Dade, Orange, Evolve, and Bivard. And so we took a look at the number of jobs created, we accepted the ones that the state gave us, on the first floor, on our own duty, for critical view. Some of those projects are two and three years old. There are some adjustments that I think mean about how many jobs will actually, actually reduce number, and capital less than. So in terms of jobs created, believe it or not, the EDC is number five in the entire state. In and of itself, it's quite a tally. When you relate the number of jobs created to the population base, I think the results are kind of astounding. Fortunately, I think our format and our computer is different from yours, so you're not walking through it. But what we basically did, we took the number of jobs created, divided it by the population base, because there is a relationship, you're not going to buy 1,000 jobs, you're in a community of 50,000 people, it's mathematically impossible. But as a matter of efficiency, we took the market share, divided it by the number of jobs, and turned that into a percent. The top, top one there is the Bivard EDC. You can see visually how much better we're doing on efficiency grading than the others. The second was Evolve County, third was Hillsborough, Chambly, next one, EDC. They score well on any number of things. Or Orange County, and then Miami-Dade. So I think that's something we all be proud of. I think, you know, the answer is we did not only perform well, we were performing efficiently. We haven't completed the ROI studies we're doing, but first pass on the numbers, our budget is only, the next closest EDC, which I think was Evolve, their budget is 70% higher than the EDC. Some of the budgets are complex, so you've got to remember. Of course, there's a question here in Satellite Beaches, you know, what does the EDC do for Satellite Beach? I think the fact that you folks decided to take the test, and you can see, you understand that even though there's going to be land costs, available land, and, and, it won't be as many- that even though there could be land costs, and available land, and, it won't be as many projects done here. Nonetheless, I, physically, saw folks, and I want to share with you some numbers, valid on the projects, some that councilmen already mentioned. Clear up some misconceptions, and try and relate that to Satellite Beach. First of all, contrary to some press reports, they actually are going to create 1,000 new jobs, councilman mentioned 1,200. That's because there are some existing north of jobs that will be leaving, so about 200 or 300 actually. So in order for them to create 1,000 new, they must replace those. So the net new, which is what we measured, is 1,000 jobs. And the average wage is $375,000. And what they're doing here is new. We're one of the design centers for excellence, and this one we focus on man aircraft activity. The other thing that sometimes gets lost in the mix, and when the time comes to justify why people invest in EDC, why the county does, why you folks do, why companies do, there's sometimes a feeling that somebody feels just happy. And everybody knows what's here. But what people don't understand is Northland probably operates in 25 different states, but they're really heavy. And so what their presence here often binds us is a serious consideration when a new project hits the streets, so to speak. We compete very, very hard against a couple of other states, with the support of the county, cities, and the EDC having grant that we use part of toward, and we were able to, and the state helped, we were able to put together a package that actually grew up this year. This was not over that. A company like Northland Roman has choices, and we were fortunate to win that project. The economic impact, the slide says, it's about 141 million direct economic impact. It's a conservative number, but we don't talk about induced direct jobs, at least in this slide. The payroll impact is something like $75 million a year annually. And given the salaries included in relative tracking of Satellite Beach, many of those employees come out and report to Northland Satellite Beach, but they're certainly going to buy homes here, and they're certainly going to die here, go to bars, buy gasoline, and do all those things. Ultimately, those demands will increase property values, and the payback ultimately is a weekly increase in tax or a capture of the workforce. The military relationship is something that's very important to know of through Satellite Beach, obviously, and the EDC. For over 10 years, the EDC has brought community leaders to walk through the EDC, some political officials, leaders in the nation's capital, to promote the area, discuss our concerns in regards to towards what goes on with space personnel. One of the opportunities that have come out of the recent trip is this P4 initiative under our chair-elect, which is Debbie Good, the EDC, who's really doing the groundwork and the community effort to bring together community, military, public, and private partnerships, which that's how we get to the P4. Over the course of the year, local municipalities, including Satellite Beach, have been reacting to this. In our partners, the Air Force, were able to identify opportunities for joint cost saving. We can hear more about this going forward. It's not an initiative that I personally working on, so if you have questions, we have any kind of, probably, feel you're better than I can. We have, over the years, also obtained grants for military installations here. Last year was a $275,000 grant, this is 2010, and I was just a little over 30. And of course, as many of you know, in 2004, 2005, EDC successfully defended Patrick Air Force Base, great work of Patrick Air Force, against RAC. So we're really correct, you know, the EDC did such a terrific job. It's a long time ago, and sometimes it's a bit forgotten. SNAP is an EDC initiative. The program stands for Simplified, Gimple, Accelerated, and Criminaling. It recognizes municipalities that have worked with our group to improve and streamline permitting process. We began this program, we began working on this for a long time ago, when we actually began SNAP program in 2010. Many communities have worked closely to get certified. What really is, is a focus on how you can permit better, streamline processes, and be more efficient. Now, it's really maybe more built to suit, maybe more valuable, but in a city like Satellite Beach, this is a program that will also improve your ability to, to be purpose land and permit it, and how you control that process. So we actually look forward, we hope that the city will be a part of the SNAP program. It is voluntary, we provide it to a large group of people, there's lots of different agents, I think, close communities, and the program will tell you that it really, really helps what they're trying to do. Go contracts is a really new program. EDC has always, it actually officially was September 1st, and we've been working on it probably a year and a half. We've always recognized that, although we sometimes, we're criticized, because we always seem to work with these are big companies, EDC's always realized that small, medium-sized companies, and especially those in the market, deserve our attention. And we've always done it, and we've always struggled for ways to, you know, really move the needle. Go contract is an opportunity, because clearly, whether you like it or not, government is spending more and more tax dollars on buying these services. But if you're a small, medium-sized company, and you don't know how to leverage that buyer, you're severely restricting your growth opportunity. Big companies like Harris have whole departments that do this. So we worked with a vendor to design a program that would really put all those capabilities on one desktop with small business communities. You know, find the opportunity, you can find out, you can be purchasing agent in, you can run a search and see what company, the contract is expiring the next five years, it's really an amazing tool. We launched it September 1st, we're ready now, 60 companies signed up, it's limited, there's only 100 licenses, and we're able to negotiate a program. And believe it or not, in less than six weeks, we actually had this small company, three persons, business contract with the EDC about. So I think it's something that's going to show a lot of promise, I think you're going to hear a lot more about. Made in Brevard is another program, it's a little longer, it's only Jennifer's worked on personally. It does a number of things. I think the thing that's most valuable is its recognition, I think it supports supporting manufacturing in the community. Manufacturing jobs typically not only pay more, but they come with benefits, you can provide career paths, and it's a better job. By recognizing what is made in Brevard and the companies that are making it, we think it will be a business attraction tool, and will also bolster at no cost to the company some of their individual marketing efforts. We can remember a little about that, I'm willing to get questions to you. Yeah, and I really appreciate the support you did last year tonight. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Council questions?
Could you elaborate on that P4 initiative?
Sure. Hi. Yeah. Well, Courtney can probably speak just as intelligently as I can, but the P4 initiative is something that's not really in the mainstream yet, we haven't even really, I've been able to depress.
Talk to us, please.
Sure, absolutely. In general terms...
Give me the microphone. Give me the microphone.
Sorry.
Can you hear me in here? Okay. In general terms, P4 stands for Public-Public-Private Partnership. So what that means is that cities and the county partnering with the basis, Patrick Air Force Base, to try and produce cost savings. So they're taking a look at what they already have. If you think about Patrick Air Force Base, they're pretty much a city on their own. So what P4 is trying to do is open up the base a little bit more, as much as they can, to cities and counties, so that they can share services. Fire is one that's come up. There's a whole list. We started with 25 of them about a year ago, and it's been cut down to six that we're focusing on in the short term. Opening up the beach house and the tides to the public, having them be able to have weddings there, or access there, is one of the first ones that we hope to close and consider a success. So that's just a couple examples of what P4 is doing. We've had a lot of working groups, it's been a lot of work with, you know, Courtney, other city managers, we have Howard Tipton, of course, our county manager helping us. So, does that answer your question? It's a partnership between municipalities and the Air Force.
The big driver, the, this thing very much, when you have, you know, trying to interact with the military, those are the things that should be able to get conversation going. But the theory behind it is that it is duplication of services and expenses, that results in savings both for the community and the military, and it's a group in the market that looks for ways to reduce everybody's costs without reducing the service, and that sort of macro. So, you know, hopefully, this first one, which is more of a social win, but it does open the door, laser gun cooperation, that we can do some things, you know, maybe, save the city and the Air Force, so we can get...
Further questions, any council? Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open up for public, and you might have some questions to answer from there. Thank you. At this time, open up this agenda item for public comments. Any public comment on this agenda item?
Good evening. I'm Maureen Root, and my husband within the Air Force did 25 years. I was just wondering, sitting there, if this improved the commissary and the BS?
To my knowledge, no, it does not. The public will not be able to have access to those sorts of things.
Yeah. Go ahead, you're on the task force, right away.
Any further public comment? The floor is open. Hearing none, back to council. Councilwoman?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll move on to agenda item number 11, discuss, take action on resolution number 939. Jim?
Resolution number 939, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, acknowledging and agreeing that the Satellite Beach Soccer Club has the continuing right to utilize a soccer field located at the Satellite Beach Sports and Recreation Park for a period of 10 years, providing an effective date.
We approve resolution 939.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro, to approve resolution 939. Discussion from council? This time, open it up for public comment on 939. Hearing none, bring it back to council. Any further discussion from council on this? Here, basically, this agreement is what we've really had all along, it's just from Little League and everything else, and just, we support this organization.
We needed language for future grants that stated that 10-year term.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lenore, will you pull the council, please?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nothing moving on to agenda item 12, discuss, make recommendations regarding review of Satellite Beach Soccer Club grants submitted to the Florida Youth Soccer Association. Carrie?
Thank you. We have Charlie Graham here this evening, too. If you want to come up to the podium, Charlie, that'll help us out a little bit. The cost to, like, one of the fields is right around $125,000, $30,000, it's quite expensive. The best way to get that done is to secure grants. One of the grants is submitted to the Florida Youth Soccer Association, and can only be submitted by an affiliate club, which is the Satellite Beach Soccer Club, not the city. So the Satellite Beach Soccer Club has prepared a grant, and it was my opinion that should an organization in this town wish to secure improvements onto a facility that the city manages, the city council ought to have a speak on that.
Okay, thank you. Questions concerning this, submitted to the grant?
Well, I think there's the obvious question of how the city has any authority to tell the soccer club what they can do. But I, you know, I understand the point that Carrie's making, and I think this is more of a cosmetic action than anything with any real teeth to it, so...
And Carrie, you've been, you're going to help them with the grant, to make sure it is?
Yes, sir. They've done the majority of the lake work, and we'll just make sure we get everything that speaks to the city correct before it goes off.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Hearing none at this time. I will open it up for a public comment on this agenda item.
One more question, who are the lakes going to belong to then?
If I'm not mistaken, if they are on Satellite Beach, probably they belong to the city.
Yes, sir.
Any further public comment? Jerry, did you hear that? They belong to the city, thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Hearing none. Back to council.
I would make a motion to have the council concur with the soccer club's submission of the 2013 Florida Youth Soccer Association grant.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Five, nothing. Thank you very much, and good luck. Moving on to agenda item number 13, discuss, take action on ordinance number 1075. Jim?
Ordinance number 1075, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Environment, by creating a new Article 7 entitled Illicit Discharges to regulate and prohibit illicit discharge to the city's separate storm sewer system, MS4, as required by law, creating Section 26-131, Purpose and Intent, Section 26-132, Definitions, Section 26-133, Applicability, Section 26-134, Ultimate Responsibility, Section 26-135, Control of Pollutant Contributions from Interconnected MS4s, Section 26-136, Prohibitions, Section 26-137, Stormwater Discharges from Commercial, Industrial, or Construction Activities to the MS4 or Regulated Waters, Section 26-138, Authorized Exemptions, Section 26-139, Emergency Conditions, Section 26-140, Inspection and Monitoring for Compliance, Section 26-141, Reporting Requirements, Section 26-142, Penalty and Additional Remedies, Section 26-143, Appeals, Providing for Conflicting Provisions, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in Code, and an Effective Date, Providing for Reserved Sections 26-144 through 26-163. It's a second reading of ordinance number 1075.
Thank you very much. To council, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 10...
Will you hang on that for just a second? Okay. I have a question there. On Section 26-138, on page 7, what's the difference between D, Landscape Irrigation, M, Irrigation Water, and O, Lawn Watering?
Where are you at?
I'm on page 7 of that ordinance. I'm asking the difference between D, Landscape Irrigation, M, Irrigation Water, and O, Lawn
Does anyone hear me?
Yeah, I think the landscape irrigation is just irrigation in the, this is just my guess, landscape irrigation is irrigation that is in your beds, and then the lawn watering is your spray sprinklers, your broadcast sprinklers.
But it's all irrigation water.
It's all irrigation, I agree, I agree.
So I would suggest that we strike D, Landscape Irrigation, and strike O, Lawn Watering, and keep M, which is Irrigation Water, and renumber, or reletter those entries accordingly.
How about if we, where we put M, where it says Irrigation Water, you just put after it, including Lawn Watering and Landscape Irrigation?
It's self-explanatory. Irrigation Water is irrigation.
Yeah, but they're done differently. What you would put in beds is not necessarily the way you would irrigate lawn. You could have... You could have.
So, you see a need for this?
Soaker hose. Well, you could, you have different types of irrigation in beds. You could have soaker hoses, you could have drip irrigation. I mean, you have different components.
So, you see a need to keep this?
I would, I would agree with what you're saying and eliminate two of them, but when you say Irrigation Water, you can just put parentheses to say including landscaping and lawn watering, so that you at least have the difference in there. Because there are different techniques for, for different irrigation systems.
Okay, so then, the change that I'm suggesting is to delete D and delete O and change M to read Irrigation Water, comma, including landscaping and lawn water. And then, on the next page, page, or page nine, Section Twenty-Six dash one forty-two, and right in the middle where the line starts actual or construction possession, that should be constructive possession.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes, the line beginning with actual.
What page?
I'm on page nine.
What section?
Section Twenty-Six dash one forty-two, right in the middle. The line starts actual or construction possession. It should be constructive possession.
There's that all?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Number Ten Seventy-Five with those two changes. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilwoman Gott. Still open for.
And I would, and I would make the observation that these are not substantive changes. This is second reading, but these are not substantive changes, so it would be allowed in second reading.
The count, it's open for discussion, counsel?
Well, there, there are different components to irrigation, and irrigation water could just be irrigation water without a component in a bed or lawn, so I don't really see any need for a change. You know, there's different techniques. When you water lawn, you're spraying. When you're doing beds, you can use different techniques, or it could just be irrigation water that's being discharged, so I don't really see a need to change it, and it's, let's just say the way it is and be adopted the way it is.
Further, counsel? I'm good. What's your, what's your? Further, before I open up for public? At this time, I'd open this up to public comment for this agenda item.
My understanding, it is first reading, correct? Second reading?
Yes, it is.
What is the source of this ordinance? Is this a boilerplate from the state, or has this been moved around and changed to fit the community?
This, the model came from EPA. It was the EPA model.
F D A or?
EPA, the feds, the feds. And then, it was through the state, and we borrowed Melbourne's, and we, we massaged it to meet Satellite Beach. That's clear to you?
All right. Then my second question is, I obviously can't point anything at the permissive system, and maybe I can, but perhaps this needs to be renewed and chapter to ensure that verbiage is not changed or sections are not changed to exclude or create future problems for the city and having to revisit it. Because we do have some changes coming up here, and we are, I may have a different interpretation of irrigation water, and somebody else may have an interpretation of irrigation water. Are we confident that this rule with these new proposed changes on second reading, or in line one, is the intent of the law is best for it?
Thank you. Floor's still open for public comment?
Hey, Ellen Abrams, President. Um, two questions. I know we don't have reclaimed water in this community, but that could happen on the future, right? There are communities that are getting it. How does that, where does that stand? And for those of us who have rain barrels that collect water off of our roofs through the gutter system, does that have any impact on what you're doing here?
No, I mean, I think reclaimed water would just fit in with landscape irrigation, you know, irrigation water. And, you know, if you have a rain barrel, that would not, this ordinance would not impact that.
And just, just so people are aware, the city did a study, and Harry Pollock was here earlier, but Harry was the chairman of that committee that looked at reclaimed water being pumped up from south of Spresser Holland Golf Course, and it was astronomically expensive to bring irrigation, reclaimed water to Satellite Beach because it had to go through Melbourne Beach, Indian Harbor Beach, and none of them wanted a part of it. So, it may come in the future, but we, we did an exhaustive study of how much it was going to cost, and it was astronomical for us to pipe that water up here.
Alan, this is also an ordinance we had to do for our T M D, right?
For N P D E S requirements, our MS Four permit and T M D L requirements as well.
And this puts us in compliance with what we're supposed to be in compliance with to enforce these things. That's why we're doing this.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. The floor's still open for public comment. Hearing none, bring it back to counsel. Counsel? Any further discussions?
What's the change again? How are we doing it?
The change was.
There were two changes.
Two changes. Hold on, let me get to that.
Yeah.
On page seven.
On page seven, I think we're taking out D.
Mm-hmm.
Taking out O.
Mm-hmm.
Making irrigation water to include lawn watering and.
Landscape irrigation.
I still think it should stay as is, and I'm explaining, because if you have an irrigation pipe and it's just flowing, somebody's going to say, I'm not watering my lawn, or I'm not watering my landscape. You know, you need to be careful, and I think that's why it was separated out in the model to say landscape irrigation, which would be in the landscaping, irrigation water, which could just be a pipe flowing. Even if you had a broken pipe, that would be irrigation water, right? But then someone would argue, well, I'm not watering my bed, and I'm not watering my lawn. So, you, I, I mean, I think it's separated for a reason, and the reason being that it's covering irrigation water, which could be free-flowing from a pipe. It's covering beds or landscaping irrigation, which is in the beds, if there's an issue with that, and then it's covering lawn irrigation. So, if it came from the model, it's, there's a reason why it's there, and I think it should stay as is.
Thank you. Question. On that, guys, did this come right from the model, the way it was listed?
Yes.
It did.
And these are exemptions, so if these are illicit discharge, these are exemptions of and from illicit discharge.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to point that out, because it sounds like, you know, the, these were, you know, illicit discharge, which they're not, they're just exemptions from the, from the, look at the language of the.
The other, the other change was on page nine, and it was a, the word in one word.
I think, Ms. Medina, you were more referring to the page seven. Any further discussion from counsel? Hearing none. Lenore?
Oh, it stays as is. The motion stays as is.
Motion, no one's changed the motion for me, so I can't make motions.
Ms. Medina?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Ms. McGott?
Yes.
Ms. Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Five, nothing. Thank you very much, staff, on this. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Discuss, take action on Ordinance Number Ten Seventy-Four. Jim?
Ordinance Number Ten Seventy-Four, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter Twenty-Six, Environment, by creating a new Article Six entitled Fertilizer Use on Urban Landscape to provide for the regulation of pollutant runoff and the application of fertilizers as required by law, creating Section Twenty-Six dash one oh five, Purpose and Intent, Section Twenty-Six dash one oh six, Definitions, Section Twenty-Six dash one oh seven, Applicability, Section Twenty-Six dash one oh eight, Timing of Fertilizer Applications, Section Twenty-Six dash one oh nine, Fertilizer-Free Zone, Section Twenty-Six dash one ten, Low-Maintenance Zone, Section Twenty-Six dash one eleven, Fertilizer Content and Application Rates, Section Twenty-Six dash one twelve, Application Practices, Section Twenty-Six dash one thirteen, Management of Brass Clippings and Vegetative Matter, Section Twenty-Six dash one fourteen, Exemptions, Section Twenty-Six dash one fifteen, Training, Section Twenty-Six dash one sixteen, Licensing of Commercial Applicators, Section Twenty-Six dash one seventeen, Enforcement and Monitoring, Section Twenty-Six dash one eighteen, Penalty, Additional Remedies, Section Twenty-Six dash one nineteen, Appeals, Providing for Conflicting Provisions, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification and Effective Date, Providing for Reserved Sections Twenty-Six dash one twenty through Twenty-Six dash one thirty. It's a first reading of Ordinance Number Ten Seventy-Four.
Thank you very much, counsel. Who would like to start?
Can I just start with the obvious housekeeping things, and then we can get into the discussion? On page four, definition toward the bottom of slow release. The last line starts with the word reference, and I think that that word does not belong in there. It doesn't make any sense. Extend its availability to the plant longer than a reference rapid or quick release. I would strike the word reference. On page eight, the last, it's Section Twenty-Six, one sixteen, Paragraph A, right at the very bottom, Satellite Beach Clerk's Office. The last full line should be clerk apostrophe S. On the next page, same thing, last line of Paragraph C, Satellite Beach Clerk's clerk apostrophe S. In Section Twenty-Six dash one eighteen, one, two, three, four, five, fifth line down, starting with the word constructions, the same thing, should be constructive possession.
Okay. Who would like to start? Questions concerning ordinance Number Ten Seventy-Four?
I'll start. It's, it's apparent that it came from the state model, and then the planning and zoning board made some recommendations that are more restrictive than the state model. I would like to hear from the public before I make a decision on whether I'm going to support the recommended changes.
Okay.
The only kind of what I have is I got to briefly talk with John before the meeting tonight. I'd kind of like an update on what you found, that, you know, kind of get their input on this, because they've got some new information that just came to light, so that's my, that's my question slash comment for right now.
You want to give us the information? Sure. Thank you.
Part of the process, when there's a recommendation for a more restrictive ordinance, which the recommendations coming out of P Z A B were more restrictive, they're identified in the bolded areas, there's a few of them, that you have to submit those, those recommendations to F D Act, which is your Department Agricultural, and F D E P, Department of Animal Protection. Both of them provide a comment back recommending that we adopt the model ordinance, and without some solid science to demonstrate why we would want to make it more restrictive, they're strongly encouraging us to not adopt a more restrictive ordinance. And those letters are provided at your seat there.
Thank you. Further?
Yeah, I apologize for whatever reason, they were referenced in the, the agenda, but they didn't get into the package, and we caught it in the eleventh hour. Wanted to make sure you guys had a copy of this.
So, what you're saying is, they don't want us to make it any more restrictive than it is unless we have a way to prove.
Science.
Science on those.
That's correct.
Now, when we put them in, let me ask this from the board. Did we have the science?
No, no, there's been no science to support the more restrictive recommendations. These recommendations, they came out of discussions with P Z A B and also from several organizations that were in attendance at P Z A B, and basically, I took all the recommendations, which for the most part, I got it all prior to that board, and then incorporated them into one draft ordinance, so that P Z A B, the board, could look at the state ordinance and also these, these recommendations from, like, the Sierra Club to other surprise organization, and basically decide for themselves where they wanted to go with that, and they took a few of the suggestions, and the majority of them, they did not, but they did take a few of them, and those are reflected in this ordinance.
Let me ask you one question first. If we looked at the recommendations that they made, and if we looked at them favorably, what is the cost to the city above and beyond what our normal cost would be adopting the ordinance that's the model ordinance?
Well, I think, actually, the city attorney may want to chime in on this one, simply because I see this really more as a legal issue, and it's, it's been said that these organizations don't have any teeth, and therefore, we could be more restrictive and not have to be concerned about them. My concerns are more with the industry, such as the fertilizer industry, and those kind of people that do have the teeth and do have the money to push this issue.
I don't.
By making it more restrictive, then they could come back, because we don't have the scientific backing to.
And can I, can I speak? I actually, this is a very complex subject, believe it or not. If you Google it, which I did today and yesterday, a lot of discussions about fertilizer ordinances in Brevard County, and the majority of the municipalities have gone with the model ordinance, because there are some legal ramifications when you go above and beyond that, the model ordinance, without the justification or the support. So, I understand the importance of the ordinance. I'm, I'm fine with the model ordinance, but going above and beyond that, I have, I have a real concern with it.
So, what you're saying, though, then, is the model ordinance, this ordinance, we can't do anyway, because the state says we can't make it stronger without scientific proof? Or do we pass this, and then we have to provide scientific proof for them to sign off on it? So, we just cannot do it, correct?
The state's just recommending that we don't adopt a stronger ordinance, because without the science, that, that's what they're saying.
That's their recommendation.
That's all that, that's a recommendation.
We, we have the right to do any ordinance we want, but they're saying that because you don't have science to support it, we're recommending that you don't adopt it.
It's actually an unusual situation where the state, they basically, minimum, that on an ordinance that they want you to adopt, it's unusual for them to say that you can't make it more restrictive, which usually we can, but this is a case where they're strongly recommending that you don't.
Genesis, the genesis of the more restrictive ordinance came from meetings that the municipalities had, together with the county Department of Natural Resources, the Natural Resources Management Office. Those more restrictive suggestions came from those meetings. The original model was going to be more restrictive. When the state senate passed the bill that said you cannot be any more restrictive than the model ordinance, is when Brevard County pulled the more restrictive ordinance, went with the model ordinance, and that was the genesis of those rules being, those suggestions being pulled, because the state passed the bill that said you can only be as restrictive as the state model ordinance. So, to say that you have to have science to back this up is probably inaccurate, only in that that's what they're saying, only because that's what the bill says. So, I, you know, I just wanted to give you some more background as to what the genesis of those other restrictions were, and I think there was a consensus amongst the municipalities in Brevard County that they wanted to go with the more restrictive, but when they passed the bill in Tallahassee, that's when Brevard County backed off, and some of. some other municipalities did, and some other municipalities did not. So just want to give you
When is the science supposed to be here? I mean, are we waiting five years, 10 years? Because in the absence of science, you have to look at common sense. The common sense tells me, I look at the river. I moved here in nineteen seventy-six to Florida. I started diving in the Keys in the eighties. Moved here in eighty-four, and I used to be able to go out in the river and clam, and I can't do that anymore because there's nothing out there. So common sense tells me we have a problem. There's a meeting tomorrow night at the lagoon house, the marine resource council is meeting to look at this issue. I mean, I think we recognize we have a problem with our lagoon. Whether this is the total answer or not, I don't know. But again, in the absence of science, common sense tells me that this could be part of the problem. And I don't know whether the model ordinance addresses all of what needs to be done. And I'm still teetering right now, but I don't want to be put in a situation where we adopt this ordinance and it goes away for five years and we don't do anything with it because there's no science that's going to eventually back it up. And I have a real problem with that because our lagoon is suffering right now.
Well, let me add to the, the science that we're talking about is only for those components that are more restrictive, which in this ordinance, there's only a couple of them that really are about the additional science needed to support it, such as the restricted application period, where right now it talks about the, I think it's prohibited application period, and that's where essentially the model ordinance is saying that you can't water during, you know, storm wash, you know, hurricane, notice of hurricanes and, you know, notices by the National Weather Service. The, um, restricted application period, which is a more restrictive definition, it basically says that that period, June, June one
June one through
Right, essentially it's pretty close to the hurricane season, not quite the same, but it's saying that you cannot fertilize during
Let me ask you a question. You read the information that came in one of the documents that we got that had to do with the place out in Sarasota where they've implemented that, and they found that it worked in that scenario. So I mean, you know, once again, it's not scientific because there's never been a study that actually worked that issue, but it obviously worked. So I, you know, I've got some real heartburn with, if, we're surrounded by water. I mean, look at all of the streets that we have that are lined with canals.
It's still
I mean, you know, all of the stuff that goes into those canals ends up in the lagoon, and it, I think it's been detrimental to the lagoon. I'm just, I mean, I, I want, I went and put my kayak at Long Point Park a month ago, and I went out there where there used to be seagrass, and there's none. There's nothing out there. It's just barren sand. We don't do something, I mean, it's great that we can all sit here and even Brevard County and the other municipalities and adopt this model ordinance, but if the model ordinance doesn't address things that need to be addressed, and we choose to be more restrictive, you know, I don't know if I'll have a problem with that.
Can I get clarification on just one thing before we continue the discussion?
Okay, then I might say something.
Did, is there a law that says we cannot be more restrictive? Did I hear you say that?
It's, it is a suggestion. Well, I honestly
What's that? I'm pretty, yeah. Okay, well, John, John's saying it didn't pass, but I'm
There is no restriction on them.
I don't think there's any restriction.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, then I sit, I sit correct.
It didn't pass.
But to your knowledge, was it, I'm being more restrictive?
I can't hear. I didn't hear the question.
For the exact verbiage in the law, it passed, passed.
So then what we're saying is that officially, we don't know.
It did not pass.
It did not pass. We know that. Okay.
I just don't know what the, I don't remember what the exact verbiage was that was in the law. That's all.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
In my opinion, these changes from P and Z are very small changes that make it slightly more restrictive. I'd be shocked if the fertilizer industry comes after the city of Satellite Beach, but if they did, we would have been that, either asked them to prove that their fertilizer isn't polluting the river, or we just changed the ordinance.
Well, how can they come after us? We can pass any ordinance that we want.
Yes, we can.
I'm going to say this on it. The little bit more restrictive isn't bad. I've made my livelihood on that water for over forty years. I spent from three o'clock to five-thirty with a gentleman on the phone today, who I'd probably say there's not too many people that have more knowledge of the lagoon. His name's Grant Gilmore. And, you know, there's one thing I think is interesting, we all, and I read it in the book a time ago, it was in a A A A thing, it said, "The first thing is you have to realize what the problem is. We are the problem." And I say this because he sent me a map today, and he sent me the first map that showed all the seagrass that has started to grow. And then he sent me the second overlay where those areas are. And it's not rocket scientists. The worst areas were here, where the most population and runoff is. The better areas were up north in the Skeet Lagoons, some of those areas where you had less runoff. And so I, I think the momentum today with people is they would rather save their environment. And if it's a little more restrictive and somebody comes back and says, "No, you got to change it," then I'd like to change it. But I would hope that we would leave here today, that we're better tomorrow, that what we did today at least gave the river a chance, because it really doesn't stand a chance with what we have. And, you know, if it's a little bit more, we've always taken a position in Satellite Beach for years that we want to make things better. We were in the first places to have baffle boxes here. We went, did the demonstration projects long before most people did with Marty Smithson. So I read a few of them here, and they were kind of, you know, so, I, I didn't see anything to me that was so outlandish, that wasn't common sense. And I think we got to get to the common sense of it, that we cannot dump, you know, fertilizer into and into the lagoon system. It dud Mark.
Comment I have is, in light of what we've been given tonight, and what, what the discussion that's going on, do we need to take these documents that we've been given and send it back to PZAB to take another look at it before we take action?
I kind of agree with that, because it's not, and I want to make it very clear, I'm not opposed to a fertilizer ordinance. I, I think we need one, but what I am opposed to is making it more restrictive based on a planning and zoning board recommendations that are arbitrary and not based on any data and some of the information that was just provided to us at the dives tonight. So I, I do think we need the ordinance. I think it's very, very important, but I'm just very concerned about how and where, how they came up with some of the criteria that are more restrictive in this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not in a disagreement with the ordinance at all, and I'm a hundred percent on board with it. I'm just saying, does PZAB need to take another look at this one more time? If they don't, okay, fine, but I just don't know if, based on what Alan and what John has said, if they need to take one more shot at it.
Do you mean based on the letter that came in response to what they were proposing?
Yes.
The, the two letters?
Yeah.
But the letter says that a recommendation, it doesn't say that it has to be, it's law.
Right. Just a discussion point, whether they, whether we want to do diligence with that or act as, as it is.
When do they, when do they meet? Again, do they meet? If we, let me ask you this. If we adopt, if we, this is a first reading, we can always change it on second, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we, just for instance, if we accept what's here today as being more restrictive, is there a P and Z meeting between now and our next regular council?
You cannot change it substantively on second reading.
Okay.
And that would be substantive?
That, what we're talking about would be substantive.
Because it's not making it
You're reducing the regulation.
So if we, if we, if we voted for this tonight
Then that would be a way to do it.
Yeah, if we made it more restrictive tonight, we could, on second reading, take those restrictions away.
That is correct.
Okay.
And in between now and then, there is a P and Z meeting that we could send this to?
Well, to make, um, to make a recommendation, it would have to be advertised, and we're talking November eighteenth for that PZAB.
Well, I was, my question wasn't, there's not one between now and the November, okay? But we could pass it on first reading, then do it on the second meeting in November?
Just table the next meeting, yeah?
It would be the nineteenth. I, I just would like to see, get something going on.
And if I could, you know, Jack, real quick, I just wanted to make sure that the more restrictive in many cases is, um, adding criteria for measurement. For example, the, the low phosphorus, what is that? You know, what is low phosphorus mean? Does that mean it's got ninety-five percent phosphorus or five percent phosphorus? So what they're, they're proposing to do is eliminate that. And then the nitrogen piece where they were asking for fifty percent, that was the, that was the threshold that they were putting in there. And when you're looking at the city as an enforcing agency, we like those thresholds, because what is low, slow-release nitrogen, does that mean ninety percent or forty percent or five percent? So what is that?
So you're saying where they added that, where they added that fifty percent, there's at least a level that he's got to go out, he can measure from that level. Well, that's, that was what I, the question that I came to you with.
So as a manager, that's what we like. We like those cut and dry sections because, you know, what
He was too subjective.
Fifty percent for, you know, someone over here is fifty, is too much, and fifty percent for somebody over there is not enough. So, you know, that, I just wanted to be, make that clear, is that some of them may not be the restrict, more restrictive, it's just more definitive.
If we're going to be looking at the, at the PZA recommendations, they put a definition in here for restricted application period. And if, if we're going to go there, then the purpose and intent section, twenty-six, one-oh-five, on page two, needs to add
You understand.
Add in there, where, let's see, where should I have it?
It should say establishes prohibited and restricted application periods.
Yep. It needs to be, restricted needs to be added in there in the third line, where it says established, it should say establish prohibited and restrictive applications.
So I, and I would say that that, that one definition is the, is the part of what they added that is more restrictive, but that, that is the one piece.
The big piece.
Yeah. So that might be something we ask them to look at more carefully with the recent comments of the board or of the state agencies.
Let me open it for public and then bring it back to us for discussion, is that okay? At this time, I'd like to open up for public comment. John?
Tom Burris, one thirty-five minutes. What you got here from the state is the product of heavy lobbying, and they don't want to see it. Uh, we have a lagoon that is going from apple fitted to microfitted. Instead of seagrass and dolphins and fish, they're going to alligator. And if you want science, I'll give you some. The state publishes every year how much fertilizer is sold in each county in this state. We also had St. Johnstone study, which is the basis for the TMDL. The city helps contribute to the green team, reworked that work, and both groups came up with roughly the same number as being the limit of tolerance this lagoon has for how much nitrogen it can get into it each year. And surprisingly enough, if you take the number of tons of fertilizer sold in this county, and take the numbers that were provided to tell you how much nitrogen and how much phosphorus was in each of those tons of fertilizer, and you compare that against the number of how many tons of nitrogen and phosphorus this lagoon can absorb, they're awful close. The point being, we are dumping as much fertilizer into this water as this thing can absorb, and it already has a hundred years worth of fertilizer in it. Phosphorus does not go away. There's the science. We've already got too much in, and you can see the results. We've seen it for the last couple of years. And getting the point now, people are being told, in fact, I think it's in the newspaper, don't go near the water if you've got respiratory problems. Don't go even in the water. Before you know it, you're like North Carolina with a fester. You go in the water, you come out, and you get fertilizer problems. Fertilizer is a problem. And ideal ordinance would say thou shall submit no fertilizer. That ain't going to happen in my lagoon. This is only a baby step. The P and Z were a stupid baby step. And as far as the business of that period, the June dot code or whatever they do, we just came out of that period. What happened about every other day during that period? It rained. So it says, don't do it when you expect a hurricane, don't do it when you've got a rainstorm, you know, thunderstorm, something like that. It makes sense. The science is there. It rains almost every day during that period. You don't need, if you want, you got a PhD telling you this. Is that good science? I said, go with it. I'd like to see a whole lot of spirit. Keep doing it. Thank you.
Next one. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Al Vasquez, six fifty-five, for it. It's nice to see familiar faces. I agree completely with John. Like many of you, I've been an outdoor person for twenty-five years that I've been here. I look here when I was five, by the way, did you say?
Yeah.
But my, my children play in the seagrass, and this, we kayak in the seagrass, we kayak world-class assets that the state has, Silver River, Rock Springs, full of European visitors coming to see what we have. Now these places are covered with brown algae. The science is there. I, I think very few people argue that we don't have a problem. I think very few people would argue that it's not caused by fertilizer. So it's, that part is easy. I agree with John. The right thing would be, and I'll write down on fertilizers, that's, you know, I don't want to get into a thing, uh, as it's playing on in Washington, you know, that's compromised. The PZ and the, uh, planning and zoning recommendations make a lot of sense. They're simple, they make things more enforceable. Um, I would hope that this would be a unanimous vote tonight. There are many people that were not able to make it here tonight that support this. The one change I would suggest along the lines of simplifying, on page seven, section twenty-six, one-one-two, application practices. I think that the first item there, A, is redundant with other, uh, other aspects of this ordinance. So you, you might want to consider just deleting that and moving everything else. The bottom line is fertilizer should not be applied to impervious surfaces, and all this complicated stuff about shields and all that, planning and zoning wisely said, let's just get rid of that. The bottom line is we shouldn't be putting fertilizer on streets and, you know, over sea walls and that sort of thing. So I think the planning and zoning recommendations are excellent. And again, this is a good compromise, it's a good start. I wish we had done this twenty, twenty years ago. Might not be in the situation that we're in today, but I hope we can have a unanimous vote on this tonight for it. And I, I think Satellite Beach has a history of doing the right thing, you know, people hold what we do. Sarasota did that, unfortunately it beat us, but, you know, we have a chance here to be certainly in the lead in, in, in Brevard County, and I, I hope to see that, I hope to see that sort of leadership from, from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Appreciate it very much.
Can I ask Al a question?
Yeah, Al.
Al. How is that paragraph redundant?
There are other sections that talk about introduction of fertilizer into surface waters, water bodies, and that sort of thing. The, these, planning and zoning recommend getting rid of the deflectors in another section. So if we get rid of the deflectors in another section, it's a recommendation that this section is about, I think that the new part in this section is don't put fertilizer on surface waters. I didn't see that anywhere else, so I think that is important, and that belongs in this section.
I may be able to address that.
Okay, so it'd be redundant if the provision in section twenty-six dash one-oh-nine is adopted according to P and Z's is adopted according to PZ's recommendation of dropping the sentence starting with a deflector shield drop spreader. Okay.
May I make a point here? Twenty-six one oh nine, it speaks specifically to water bodies. It doesn't really address the other impervious areas that it goes into in twenty-six one twelve. Twenty-six one oh nine really is about that reduction to three feet if you use a deflector along a water body. Where they did away with that deflector and they basically said, you need to stay ten feet away.
So you're saying that twenty-six one one two A should stay in there?
I do. I do. Because it goes more into discussing other impervious areas.
Okay.
I see what you're saying, but I think I still wouldn't get rid of it. I think the one thing that's very important to get is it's a bottom-line statement. You will not put fertilizers on impervious surfaces. That's important. And it's a lot more quick cut than everything that's in A.
Right. It says that in B.
Yeah, B is hard hit. Don't put it on impervious surfaces. I think that's the bottom line.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll work from left to right just 'cause we started there.
Okay. Yeah, I thought you had a.
Ma'am? Ma'am, hold on, please. You need to. But doesn't matter. I'll just go.
Oh, okay.
Please, you'd have to come to the mic here. Thank you.
Yes, I was just saying, I thought you had the citizens of Satellite Beach to speak first.
I'll let you. We're just going around the room here.
Okay. I'm Maureen Rook, I'm president. Do you need my address?
Please.
Yeah. Seventy-one eighty-five Bright Avenue in that district, St. John's. I'm president of the partnership for a sustainable future, which is a coalition of environmental groups and individuals like the Sierra Club, O'Leary, Marine Resource Council, legal women voters, and about ten more in Bragard County. Yes, I just wanted to say the legislature, it tried to preempt the more restrictive ordinance. It didn't want more restrictive ordinance. And it tried to preempt you, which should have been a warning sign because that is an attack on home rule. And they tried all the last year to do this to you, to all the counties and cities in Florida. And it was only Altman, that Altman, that threw it at his bill. Representative Chris Foley managed to get it onto Altman's bill and that threw it out at the last minute. So there are many things. And this is just one fertilizer ordinance. There are many things. Setic tanks. Stormwater runoff. Now, the stormwater runoff. I looked into how many baffle boxes were cleaned out. Right? Let me tell you, the county has cleaned none for two years. Now, this is local governments that are contributing to the pollution if you're not cleaning them out of the regular. I have here a Florida Today from December eleventh, nineteen ninety-five. This isn't print. It says in here, the headlines was, Can Indian River Lagoon Be Saved? The article stated, Scientists estimate five hundred and seventy million gallons of polluted runoff water goes into the lagoon every day in an area from Palm Springs to Vera Beach. Each year, a hundred and twenty million pounds of sediments and fertilizers are added from Bragard cities and towns. That's in Actus Phil, two thousand two hundred and twenty-two, Donatross. The article stated that the federal government had spent five million to find out the problem. And they wanted eighty-eight million at that time in ninety-five to clean it up. Well, nothing was done. Nothing at all was done on that. So now we have it twenty years later that will cost hundreds of millions to clean that lagoon up. And believe me, there is the science to show that that lagoon is dying. And we're talking about three billion in economics for the whole lagoon, the hundred and fifty-six, about a billion dollars' worth, a billion dollars' worth in Bragard each year. And I'm just, everybody's gotta do their bit. Tighter spill and rock ledgers and a terrific ordinance on fertilizer. We have to. Because if that river dies, it'll take a hundred years or more to come back. And then they'll be our great, great, great grandchildren cursing us. So please take the recommendations of your advisory, your PZ.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Mary Star, eight nineteen, here, girl. I think there's a great deal of confusion with statute, section four oh three, point nine, twenty-three, seventy-two, which allows local governments to pass more restrictive ordinances than state law. As Maureen just pointed out, the attempt to preempt you would be a disgrace to the general. The confusion has been so great that I contacted Dr. Michael Thomas, who's in the United States program at STUP, and asked some questions about the application of the law. And I'll send that to staff tomorrow morning and to you. It is an email asking some very important questions. Chris Paul, knew what I wanted to make up on whether you know the comprehensive program which meets the requirements of the statute. The science, which you will be collecting, we'll make sure it is there. It is available. Contact, you've got to use a cell phone. And I would just understand you in the California United States study that Dr. John Elsazar and I just to show that turf grass, if fertilized before the restricted application period, will be fine during the block. And pretty morbid, I'm in the county study on the fertilizer, the ordinance effects in the county. And we probably got our conference base clients today. We have slides that are on the National Wildlife Program. We'll make sure to get those. And those studies that Dr. Cellphone has. With regard to the PZ, I attended that meeting. And I'd like to commend staff the way that they handled it. They did make sure that the PZ heard the background of the law, the science, and the efforts of the upcoming municipalities to come up with proper ordinance. And that was presented by Virginia Barker and John Roy from the county staff. We, the presentation, took more than twenty minutes. The PZ discussed thoroughly, dissected all the paragraphs that were controversial. They took two and a half hours. I have never seen such impressive board of authority. You should be so proud of me. I mean, I was amazed. Staff, let them deliberate, you know, and just make sure they understood everything. And they apply common sense. I really don't see the need for another PZ meeting since Virginia Barker has cited the scientific studies. It is true. It's state agencies, Department of Consumer Services, and UCF just have a problem with some of the stronger provisions. It's to be expected. What happens is the letters arrive and what in various municipalities, they have just gone ahead and adopted these stronger provisions. So that's what I hope you can. Who's the one who's been talking now? I wanted to talk in a couple of.
Ma'am?
Can I just give this out there?
You can pass it out, but we have a time limit.
Sure.
Thank you.
Let me just say, your ears up. We try to get some consistency among municipalities within the larger county. And I have a couple of suggestions to make if you decide to go with more restrictive provisions, to make your ordinance consistent with the drafts that I've seen here in Bragard County and also the two ordinances that are strong in Indian River County. So I just.
Thank you. If you could pass it or give it to our clerk and she'll make sure that we all.
Okay, yeah. My problem is I only got eight. Thank you. And it's just, it's basically.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Continuing on? Yes, sir.
My name is John Gagnon. I work for Sluggable Pest Control. And I actually live in Malabar. So I have kind of an interest here, what's going on because you know about rivers. And it flows downriver, kinda ends up with us. So I kinda have a special interest. Man, I really appreciate your passion.
Sir. Sir, you need to direct this way.
I'm sorry. We all have a special interest in what's going on with the game. But we all have a special interest in making decisions on the facts and not on good heart feelings. Okay? I do appreciate going into a kayak and looking at sea grass and seeing that it disappeared. But if we cannot turn around and start pointing fingers in all different directions and saying that we think it's this and we think it's that, and then we're wrong. And it's not that at all. We have to turn around. We have to look at the science that comes up in front of us every day. I'm sorry, that's what we're tasked with. I have to do that as an informant. I have to look at the big screens every day. And I have to look at my train. And I have to look at that train and I have to say, you know what? I have professors telling me this is the way the industry is. This is the way that we keep our customers safe and their pets and their families and the environment. And this is what you do. And if this is not right for you, you're in the wrong career. This is a career choice for most of the people here. It's not a four-dollar-an-hour job where we just show up at and say, hey, take that product off the shelf and I'll boss it and push it on you. This is what we do. We're out there to protect you, your families, your pets, your children. Because you know what? If we don't, what do you think happens to us in the end? We're out of business. It's not good business sense to go against facts and science. And therefore, I ask this council, do not go against fact and science and move your decisions to feelings. Because feelings in the end can be wrong. We've learned of that in history many and many times over again. But facts and science can steer us in the right position. Please, accept the law the way it's written. And if you believe that you're above the University of Florida, if you believe that you're above all the scientists that work behind this, then so be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Yes, in the back.
This is resident Satellite Beach. I'm gonna take it all the way back to the beginning. And maybe I misunderstood. But is there documentation that y'all received as council members here that citizens did not receive in the agenda packet? Was there an additional handout?
There were emails that were sent.
No, there were two.
There was, there was two packet here that we just got tonight.
Yeah, it was referenced in the memo and it was left out of the agenda packet. And we just realized it about an hour before the meeting.
So I've been potentially listening to things here. As a citizen, as a member of the community who cares about the lagoon, and I'm blind here. I don't know all the facts in front of me. I will say one thing about that, perhaps it should be tabled at this point because I feel citizens should be informed about this. We are part of the community. And this is a person who has been on the Swannie River, the Colorado River, up in the northeast and various other parts of the world. I understand the plight of the lagoon. But citizens should be given the information to understand what is being discussed. And I understand there is problems sometimes. I've said that before. That this is a very critical position on fertilizer, to go above and beyond what the University of Florida is stating. I know we all wanna do better. But alls I hear is there's a study here. There's this here. There's that there. This is all verbal.
Let's get the documentation down this front. Have a synopsis of referencing so citizens can engage and help assist with this. I manufacture my own fertilizer. And reading this ordinance.
It doesn't add up. And it's organic fertilizer. How do we all do that?
We all have some confidence in the digital. But I appreciate it. The lagoon gets this information. And I don't think it's fair to us. I hear one side say the lagoon, and I'm very fearful of the lagoon going.
But we also have a requirement here within the municipalities surrounding this lagoon that baffle boxes were not enough. Thank you very much.
The lady in the back, please.
Hi, my name is Bethany Thompson. I work for True Green. I'm from industry. But I, well, thirty-eight sixty-four Town Square Boulevard, Melbourne. My daughter goes to Satellite High.
Yay.
But I grew up in Bragard County, thirty-seven years. I remember my grandfather, we lived off of River Road in Cocoa. And I looked so forward to running down to the river and jumping off the dock and playing in the water. And there is a change in the river. But I ask that you look at the science, not just pointing fingers at fertilizer. Strong, healthy, fertilized turf acts as a filter and helps prevent runoff and leaching and erosion. The restricted period is at the height of when the grass is actually growing. It's when it's best to fertilize the grass in the summer, not in the winter months. I ask that you adopt the DEP model ordinance as the state has and reject the additional restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. No, come on.
So I thank you all for letting me speak. Not a man with a good speech. I was born in Rockfish.
Say your name, please.
David Laster. And I reside in Palm Bay. Okay? Grew up as a boy running fences on.
Okay, grew up as a boy running fences on Duna's Ranch. I was born in Rockwood, living in Brevard, give or take the years I spent serving in the service, you know, 51 years. Okay, I am in the industry, and I've been in this industry for 32 years. This is a professional industry based on science. What we do is not like it was 32 years ago. Use the word what is called the glove technique. If one glove will get them, boy, five gloves will really make it green. We don't do that. That's bad for our bottom line to start with, so it's foolish. The second thing is, as you mentioned, during your growing season, it has been proven that that lawn uses well over 90% of that nitrogen in the growing season. That's when your root system is pulling this nitrogen into it. Phosphorus almost hardly even used in this industry, and if used normally ornamental situations. Okay, you mentioned common sense clams, and I remember going out and just loading up on cherry stones. How many have been here when the clambers, you could walk across those doggone clam boats probably about nine years ago, 10 years ago, I don't remember how long it was, that turns up the bottom, because all that stood to the top, cuts off your photosynthesis, not to mention raking up the grass beds. I have seen a steady decline since that took place. The state let them do it. What I'm getting to bottom line is this is a witch hunt. There are several serious issues taking place, and I care as much of this lagoon, maybe better than some, being I've lived here all my life, but there are so many things, and the actual scientific proof shows that fertilization, if that's where the finger is being pointed, is a Band-Aid on the cancer. There are so many serious issues going on, you say, yeah, the biggest death of the grass beds in populated areas makes common sense, you got more people there, you got more cars driving down the roads, creating more runoff. Fertilizer, if used properly, and it's not the professional industry, it's Joe that's got 1,000 square feet, that's applying four bags to 1,000 square feet, it's the guy unlicensed that they're hiring to go apply the fertilizer. It's not your professional industry. Okay, being a certified operator in charge and a technical director of Slugger Bug, as far as I'm concerned, the ordinance should stand as it is, based on science.
Thank you. Last one, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Linda Barrett, 596 Sierra, Herod Atlantic Drive in Deere. Local resident, I am also the chair of the local Sierra group, and tonight I'm speaking with Sierra. Sierra, of course, wants to see a strong fertilizer ordinance, because we've seen the evidence on the west side of Florida, on the west coast, that it works. It helps protect the bodies of water. Tampa Bay, now that it's surrounded by some of the strongest ordinances in the state, has more sea grass than it ever had since 1950. It's doing wonderfully well, and you can convince me that we have more people and more population problems here than they had there before they came up with the strong ordinance. So the kinds of things we like to see are the kinds of things frankly that your planning and zoning board has put into their recommendations, and I also was at that meeting, and they did an amazing job, and they listened to the people from Natural Resources, from the county, who know what they're talking about too, who told them why we need to help the Indian River Lagoon. And as far as making the fertilizer ordinance stronger and justifying that, which I believe is written into the state ordinance or the law about the state ordinance, I can see three little words that would justify that, not those words, but Indian River Lagoon. The state of our lagoon right now certainly needs help, and that help, part of that help, I'm not saying it's the only problem we've got, but it's frankly one of the big ones according to Florida Today, is fertilizer in the water, nitrogen and phosphorus from the fertilizer. I believe I sent, I tried to send all of you a letter today, earlier today, about this, and I included, and hopefully the attachments opened, one was a set of slides showing nitrogen and phosphorus before and after Roberts Bay had strict fertilizer ordinances showing how much less nitrogen and phosphorus was in the water after. There was also a letter from the Palmer Ranch, and that should be, the word should be Master Homeowners Association, showing their experience with nitrogen, again, after they started to control the nitrogen, how much better their turf was doing too. And I know that David Bado of the Marine Resources Council had sent you a letter that included an article from the Herald Tribune in Sarasota that explained the experience that the folks over there had when they first started with the stronger ordinance, even the fertilizer industry over there was able to adjust and do very well, do even better than they had before, by obeying the stronger ordinances and using fertilizer without phosphorus, not fertilizing during the rainy period of June 1st to September 30th, because you can't tell in the morning what the weather's going to be in the afternoon. Chances are it's going to be rainy, and your fertilizer that you applied that morning is going to run down your storm drains and into the lagoon. That's the reason for the rainy season ban on nitrogen fertilizer. If you have slow release, at least 50% slow release nitrogen in your fertilizer, and you fertilize in April or May, that should take you through that rainy season till you can fertilize again in October, when hopefully it's not as rainy. Those are the main things that I had to say, and I thank you for listening this evening.
Thank you very much. Further, yes, sir.
Charlie Graham, Satellite Beach resident, real quick and simple, in the military and aviation, if you have an accident, one of the first thing that happens is you have a safety standoff. These fish kills we've had, they can warrant, something of that nature, it's much easier to relax standards than it is to get them enforced. If the city takes over stringent, look at these and puts them into play, you can always relax them, and I think that's a wonderful thing to do at this point when nobody knows everything, but it's a lot easier to be safe than sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Doc Carey, yes.
My name is Elliot Zace, and I also work for Slugger Bug, and I know what you guys are dealing with tonight. It's got to be tough, it's got to be confusing, it would kind of be like us in the audience trying to decide the fate of your jobs or what you should do or shouldn't do, and we don't really know everything that goes into what you guys have to do. The paper that I gave you, this is from our BMP instructor class. Excuse me. I'm a BMP instructor and a licensed certified operator, been in the industry 13 years, and we recently just gave a class as part of the DEP model ordinance and the BMP requirements, anybody who applies fertilizer has to have this additional training by January of 2014. So we recently did a class, and that was one of the slides, so what you're looking at is just off of a PowerPoint. And when I saw it again, you know, and knew that this meeting was coming up, what I really want you guys to take away tonight, and I believe that you'll make the best decision that you, you know, that you can make based on what you're given, but if you look at the root system, how long it is, that's what the stricter ordinance is proposing, that we don't fertilize during that time period. What it's saying is, before that root system, when that root system is short, if you look kind of in the spring area and fall area, that's when you're only allowed to put down 50% slow release. Now, I sent you on email earlier today, I don't know if you got it, read it, and my analogy in there was kind of like taking that quick release pill or that time release capsule, so you're putting down 50% slow release nitrogen in a time period where the root system is shallowest. 50% slow release, it stays there, doesn't go anywhere, it's not being used by the root system, it's not being drawn up by the leaf tissue, it just stays there. So then when the rain comes, if we're talking about runoff and leaching, that's not what you want to use. You don't want to use 50% slow release fertilizer and have something stay there when the root system is this big versus the summertime, when the root system is growing and using the fertilizer, that's when you want to fertilize. I absolutely, 1,000% agree there's an issue with the lagoon, absolutely. I hunt, I fish, my daughter, she caught a redfish before I ever did in the lagoon, but she's five, so I'm not mad at her, but I agree with that. What I don't agree with, if you're going to do anything, take out the 50%, you know, in our company, we have a philosophy, a win-win-win. It's got to be a win for the employee, it's got to be a win for the customer, it's got to be a win for the company. So I'm asking, as a win-win-win, at least meet us halfway, take out the 50%, you don't want that fertilizer sitting on there, not being used. So it's Florida, we live in a greenhouse, it can rain any time. So don't put that ban like it's, like the stricter ban, as you have in your packets tonight. So the second thing is, and I think the majority of the crowd would probably even agree with me, is the industry, you know, it's kind of the industry which sometimes gets a bad rap, that's not where all your leaching and all your polluting and dumping of fertilizer happens. It's like Dave said, you know, it's the guy that goes down to Home Depot, doesn't understand what he's buying, and he just wants his lawn green, because either the HOA told him it's got to get better or whatever, he just wants it green, period. So he puts something down, it kills half his grass, what does he do? He calls a professional. What do I do? How do I fix it? So then we got to come in and we got to do whatever's needed. So again, in my email, IPM, we do what we do when we need to do it. If that means we do a little bit of nitrogen in the summer, or the fall, or the winter, because that's what the grass needs, you've got different types of nitrogen, you've got micronutrients, I mean, it's, there's so much involved in lawn care and fertilizer, it's not just as simple as it's cut and dry, let's just do a blackout period, let's hope it fixes everything, and then walk away because we did something. If nothing else, take out the 50%, allow, add in, allow the professionals to do it. We do what's needed when it's needed. People talk about how, you know, it's our bottom line, I mean, if that was the case, we would be just spraying water, and obviously we're not being accused of just spraying water. So it's not about dollars, it's about doing what it needs, when it needs it, how it needs it, the right time of year, and then the grass species makes the difference. Bahia, if any of you have bahia, you don't need a lot of fertilizer. Most people don't know it. They see bahia, it's thin, they want to dump fertilizer, doesn't do any good. So there's a lot of good in it, and I'm sorry I've been rambling on here.
Excuse me, please, the audience, thank you.
So last but not least, just consider a win-win-win, which would include us, which would include the professionals, you know, we take our job seriously, we train seriously, the spreader guard thing, it's got to stay, we don't apply fertilizer to impervious surface. Our industry is equipped with blowers, so it goes into the grass. Spreader guards are so it doesn't go into the water. That's the whole purpose of having a spreader guard on the spreader, that's why it's there, a deflector shield. You want that, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it very much. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Higgs, I live in South Melbourne Beach, and for 12 years I served on the county commission. During that time I was a member of the National Estuary Program Steering Committee, and if you all remember back then, there was a comprehensive conservation and management plan. Many of the things that you're talking about tonight were part of that plan way back when, we just didn't ever do it, and so I hope that you will continue to look at the issues that are there, that there's not one that we can fix tonight, or tomorrow, or I don't know when, but there's not one, there are a whole bunch of them, and fortunately in your hands is something that you can do, that you can pass and that can be implemented in your jurisdiction. So I hope you will look at all the aspects of the issues. It isn't all very simple, and we won't solve it tomorrow, or today, or tonight, but what's wonderful is, it's in the hands of local people who have the chance to make a difference. And you can sit here many nights, and you'll wonder, God, why am I here? And yet tonight's the night, and the next meeting, you have a chance to really make an impact. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further more? A gentleman in the back, then Gabe.
Thomas Wilson, 1595 Highway 81, Satellite Beach. I also work at Slugger Bug, I am the instructor that co-taught the class with Elliot, who was up here earlier. I do want to encourage you guys strongly to read the BMP that is assigned with the model. It specifies very clearly rates, whereas you see things that say low phosphorus. There are actual rates in the BMP model, .25 per application and .5 pounds per year. Now, to go back to the BMP, BMP was really brought in place to educate public, more so than it was the applicators. Our jobs depend on us doing it right and following the law. The general public, they don't depend on anything, they just do whatever they please. So it was really geared towards education and trying to educate the general public, which the extension offices do offer the class to the general public.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry, I can kind of hear myself, so I was being heard. Is that okay? Better? Okay. So I defer to just what I wrote here. First off, read the BMPs, and you're getting a household of both worlds. My wife is a marine biologist, works heavily in the IRL, and then you've got me, who's part of the industry, so I've got both sides of it. The BMPs were developed to educate people to do things right, and as another gentleman with the PhD said, fertilizer purchased in Brevard correlated, which correlation does not equal causation, as I'm sure he'd agree, but correlated to the amounts that were in the lagoon. The industry purchases most of its product from out of the county. This would infer that the problem is with personally applied product, which is the uneducated public, and that's, as I said, who the BMP program is really intended for. I recommend that you would further restrict the public to not be able to apply fertilizer to their properties at all, and that you only allow industry professionals to apply fertilizer and pesticides in Satellite Beach according to the DEP model, and leave the applicating to the professionals. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabe.
I wanted to make this short. Number one, I think Chair Ellis Country said that our main goal here is to leave here better off than we were when we got here. I think that's just typical of Satellite Beach Council, that we always try to do lead, and the thing is, two things comes to mind, number one, I don't think we should go on this tonight, because it appears that we don't have all the information we need. Number two is... all the information that he should have had to be able to properly address the problem. And so that's another reason why we should kick this, which I hate to kick anything down the road, that's another reason we should kind of further go down the road. Number three, and that just came up, I defy anybody to come on my property and tell me what I can do and I can't do in my property. That's the most ridiculous statement I have ever heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none, back to council.
I'm going to start. Yes, thank you. From the standpoint of scientific information, I will promise you it is out there. And there's a few definitive people who have done work on this lagoon for many, many years. And personally, I talked to one, and I, he was my, the second was my professor, and he has definitive work on the lagoon also. And if you want to read Dr. Grant Gilmore's papers, you are going to read information on fertilizer. It's there, the information. He stands at no group at all. He is a pure scientist. And another gentleman is Dr. Buck Nelson, who was at the University of Central Florida, and did most, a ton of work in the north part of it. They both worked in two different areas to start, and they started comparing notes. And there's a common factor to a lot of this stuff, and you got to read their stuff. I know fertilizer's not fertilizer, excuse me, is not the only issue. It's one of them. And it's not that we're going to put, oh, we're going to leave something alone and not make it work, but it's not the total issue. It is a major part of it. It's one of the major parts of it. And I, to be honest, I have done my research. I've talked to scientists, I've read on this issue, and I can't find where they're telling me fertilizer is not a major issue. And, you know, I'm going to go back to what I said before, I want to be better tomorrow than I am today. And I firmly believe, the city, we've always tried to be better. And I'm for the more restrictive ordinance. I'm totally for it. And not that we necessarily have to vote on tonight, but I am definitely, my lean is towards the more restrictive. I think a lot of work went into it, and the scientific information is absolutely out there, 100% out there.
Just for the public, if you want to know, the model ordinance was put on the dais tonight. The planning and zoning meetings from March 18th were put on the dais tonight. A letter from the Department of Environmental Protection from March 27th, and a letter from the Department of Ag from April 13th. I'm going to assume that the draft ordinance was sent to the DEP and the Department of Agriculture, and this is their response. And unfortunately, because I just got this, I was kind of trying to listen deaf in one ear, trying to read at the same time. But I do have a concern, and it goes back to what I was originally saying, because I also did my research. In the absence of scientific evidence supporting the effectiveness of the proposed more stringent standards, the Department of Ag recommends adoption of the model ordinance as written. And I agree with that. I agree with that because the model ordinance is out there, and again, I didn't get through this, I highlighted a few things, but, and I agree, there's an issue with the lagoon, and I think fertilization is part of the problem, but it's not all of the problem. So that's why I'm going to support the model ordinance as written, and not go any further with a more restrictive. I'm also going to assume that this ordinance is then going to go back up to the DEP and the Department of Agriculture after this. The final, the final ordinance goes back up to the DEP and Department of Agriculture with the more restrictive requirements that are approved tonight. There's certain things that aren't addressed, such as our sports fields. I assume we're going to fall under the same restrictions, the City of Satellite Beach. I don't know how that's going to affect the quality of the turf fields, depending on the, on the conditions or the weather. Again, I don't see, and again, I had to read this and listen at the same time, anything that addresses during that restrictive period, citrus, annuals, other things, all that stuff has just been discounted in this ordinance. And I think, I just, if it has to be adopted, I'm not, I just don't think enough information was put based on these comments back from March and April in the ordinance, and I'm not going to support a more restrictive ordinance at this time.
For the comments?
Yeah, what did you say was going back to the EP?
Whatever the final ordinance is, we can send it back to DEP for their information.
I thought you said it had to go back.
No, it does not.
Thought must submit to the EP.
I'm not interested in sending anything to DEP that doesn't have to go to DEP.
Fair enough.
And I do have, you know, I, I think that everyone is in agreement that fertilizers are not the only problem in the lagoon. But the fact that it doesn't solve all the issues does not mean that that aspect of it should not be addressed. I would, I would be willing to vote tonight, and I really get tired of hearing this stuff about the public not having noticed. The public has as much notice and as much information as we did. In addition, there will be a second reading on this, and any vote can change on second reading. So tonight is not the final answer, it's the first step in a process. And as part of that process, I would like to call your attention to, go to page 8, 8, section 26-115, Training. It starts off in paragraph A, prior to January, da-da-da. All applicators of fertilizer within the unincorporated and, within the incorporated and unincorporated area of Brevard County, that's not the appropriate wording, we have no authority to regulate Brevard County, so it should read, "within the incorporated area of Satellite Beach shall abide by." And in section, the section below that, 26-116, paragraph A, same thing. We should strike incorporated and unincorporated area of Brevard County, and substitute incorporated area of Satellite Beach. Do you want me to try a motion?
You're ready?
I move that we adopt ordinance 1074 with language that includes the recommendations made by PZAB, along with the changes made here this evening on first reading.
Does that include the restricted application period being put into the purpose and intent area there also?
Yes. Yeah, any changes made tonight.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion?
Okay. I totally get your passion, Frank, for this, I really do, and I support it 100%. I think, I think that fertilizer is part of the problem, and I think this is a good first step, I'm on board with that. I guess the only concern I have is, we've had a lot of information here tonight, you know, we had two ladies get up and talk about the excellent job that the PZAB did with their review of this, and I appreciate your comments, both of you, for saying that. I know that board works very hard. I guess my, my concern with this, and I'm certainly willing to vote on this, but my concern with this is, will this, in the interim, between now and our second reading on this, will it go through the PZAB to take a look at this? We've got a lot of information that has been given tonight that may or may not influence some of the thought processes of the PZAB, but I'd certainly like to have that to them, if possible. So that's my question, is this?
We can provide that direction to staff after the motion is voted on.
Okay, wouldn't have to, wouldn't be a part of the motion?
No, I wouldn't make it part of the motion, I'd make it a separate thing.
As long as it goes back, that's my, I just want, I just want to have it heard one more time, and some of these folks may want to come to that meeting, and John's got his hand up, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you're aware that
Excuse me, in the back, please.
To go to PZAB, in order for them to give you a recommendation, it would have to be advertised, and therefore, it would be on the November 18th. So as soon as you could hear, your second reading would be November 21st.
Can they call a special meeting?
Sure. I mean, would we have a, after meeting already scheduled for the 18th?
Is it imperative?
Can I ask a question? What? Did the P&amp;Z see the letters from the DEP and the Department of Ag?
No, the way that process works is they
That's returning to me, yes.
They make the recommendation, and then we submit those recommendations to those agencies.
Can I ask a question? Why do we have to advertise for the P&amp;Z hearing? This is already an advertised ordinance, we're just asking for an additional recommendation, so why does that have to be advertised?
Mr. Beadle? Can you put on that one?
It shouldn't have to be advertised, it shouldn't have to, yes.
I mean, can't we just add it to the agenda for the 21st?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what the specific
I don't know what the specific issue John's alluding to as to why it needs to be noted, so I don't.
Because typically, when you have an ordinance, it's not, you know, planning, if the ordinance goes to planning and zoning, it's advertised, but that advertised hearing's already happened. This ordinance is advertised for City Council, you're just asking for the P&amp;Z to look at it one more time. I don't see why that has to be an advertised public hearing. Let me just kick it back to P&amp;Z.
And I don't, I mean, there's no reason why we can't wait till the 20th to vote on the second reading.
As long as it goes to the P&amp;Z.
But I would like those, these letters to go to them, and obviously, there's, it's very important that it be vetted properly.
Counselwoman Gott said, I think this is part of the process.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
That's okay. Part of the process. And this is to start it, we send all the information to P&amp;Z, and then we come back for our second reading.
I mean, I think it would be fine to just add it to the agenda as a, you know, we can do that tomorrow, we can send out the notice to the P&amp;Z members, and put it on the web, and make sure that they have, you know, four days in advance, including the weekend to review it. But just add it to the agenda, I don't think it needs to be advertised.
Okay. And the only other comment I have is, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and talking about this. It's nice to see people from other areas come and give us this input, so I thank you for that. And again, as long as we're going back, like we talked about, I'm good to go, and it allows these people to really get to the PZAB and express their comments there as well.
Great, I have no problem with that.
And I just, I just want to say one other thing. You know, we, we got a lot of emails today. This information, I mean, the woman, the thing that I was referring to, and we talked about, came today at about 2:30. So I don't know how we get all this information to you, Ron. I mean, it's not, it's not that, we can't just print all this stuff up and put it on a table over there. It's coming up at the second reading, you'll have that information at the second reading. We got a lot of emails that came to us, many of them came from the industry themselves, looking for us to support the model ordinance. You know, for us to be able to have all that information when it only came two hours earlier, we can't get it to you that quick. I'm sorry.
No, excuse me, public comment, excuse me, public comment, no. No, public comment is
I was aggressed personally.
No, thank you.
I was aggressed personally.
And I'm telling you, I'm not giving you the floor. Public comment is closed.
Something was closed.
Sir, I'm going to tell you one more time. Public comment is closed. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? The, what, just for the record, there were attachments that were supposed to be attached to this agenda item that were not, including the letter from the Department of Ag and the DEP, and the, well, not the model ordinance, but that's what was put on the dais tonight. That, he's not talking, I don't think he was referring to emails. I don't think the community was referring to, we want copies of all the emails, but the attachments that should have been in the agenda package.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
That's what I'm, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes, we understand that, because we just got it too.
Steph will be happy to create a supplemental packet that can go on the web tomorrow, that includes the emails, as well as the missing items, so people can review that tomorrow.
And I'd like to see the minutes of that P&amp;Z meeting as part of this packet.
Sure, we can add that to that as well, and we'll send that out to council, in a paper copy.
And also, I, I understand that the state put out one model ordinance, and that the county took it and modified it.
Yes.
And that it was that county-modified version that our P&amp;Z board dealt with.
Yes.
So the model from the state should also be in that packet regarding this thing.
Okay.
Okay. And the only other recommendation I would have is that, Alan, you and John should both be at that meeting to kind of give a summary as to how it's going on. I think that would save a lot of time to bring that together for everybody that shows up.
So understood well that it's going to go to P&amp;Z. You'll be there, because we definitely need to get this.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, nor?
Counselwoman Gino?
No.
Vice Mayor Berman?
Yes.
Counselwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Counselwoman Gott?
Yes.
Okay, now.
Yes, motion passes. It's 9:30, we've done a long time of this, I would like to take a five-minute break, and then come back.
[laughing]
Reconvene the meeting of October 16th, 2013, City Council meeting in Satellite Beach, moving on to agenda item number 15, discuss, take action on proposed amendment to City Council policies and procedures, and Councilwoman Gott's agenda item.
Okay, I did some color coding here that worked out better on my computer screen than it did in these printed copies, but if you will look on page two, where you see the colored, non-yellow highlighting, these, all of these green items are changes that were made after the suggestions from the last council meeting, which these were all discussed. And so, in number seven at the bottom, I changed the uniform police officer, I changed "shall" to "may," and I struck the words "which are anticipated to be contentious." On next page, under D, I struck the sentence, second sentence, and left the first one. Under, on page, that's it. The rest of those highlighted, yellow highlighted, are changes that the council was in agreement with. The ones on the last page are additional changes. However, until we pass these procedures, we can't, we wouldn't be able to, under the current council procedures, without any further amendments, we wouldn't be able to vote on the ones on page seven. So I want to hold those until after we vote. If we pass these, this amended council policies and procedures, then we will visit additional changes on page seven, because we will be able to discuss and vote at the same meeting.
So in other words, those would come back at the November 6th meeting?
No, we can do them tonight, once this thing is passed, then we can discuss and pass at the same meeting. I'll just hold the discussion on those.
Okay. Let me open up for council comments. Council comments on the
Yellow.
Yellow and green highlighted. Hearing none from council, open up for public comment on agenda item 15. Hearing none, bring it back to council, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve the amended council policies and procedures as amended on page one, page two, page three, page four, and page six.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion by council? Hearing none, nor?
Counselwoman Gino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berman?
Yes.
Counselwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Counselwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Gino?
Yes. Motion passes. Councilwoman Gott, want to?
Yeah, so then on page seven, the, in paragraph six, I added the words, the speaker shall not address the audience and shall not address a council member directly, or individually, rather. This has always been the policy, and whenever speakers get up here and start trying to orate to the audience, we ask them to turn around, so this puts this into a written policy. And so that's why that language was added in six. And then on number eight, a speaker, including any member of council, wishing to complain about a city employee, that further spells out that all of us are required to take any complaints about employees to the city manager before it comes to the council.
Okay, I have changed this by Councilwoman Gott.
Should that be an individual?
Shall not address a council member, staff member, or city attorney individually. Shall not address a council member, staff member, or city attorney individually.
Any council comments on the changes on page seven to item six or eight? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to council policies and procedures on page seven.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Montanaro, a second by Councilwoman Gott. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Hearing none, bring it back to Council, further Council comments? Hearing none, Lenore, will you poll?
Councilwoman McGee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you for the work, thank you, Council. Moving on to Agenda Item 16.
Before you move on, Lenore, I'll give you a cleaned-up copy of this.
Okay, moving on, number 16, Discuss, Take Action on Attendance at the Florida League of Cities 53rd Annual Conference in Orlando on November 21 and 22.
Yeah, staff just requesting Council to authorize the attendance for this conference. This is a legislative conference for the Florida League of Cities, and the attendees would be the mayor and Councilwoman Montanaro and myself, and we all sit on actual legislative committees, so this is budgeted, we're just requesting permission for Council's attendance.
Permission for Council to what?
To attend.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Councilwoman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Breimer, open up for discussion from, on the Council. Any Council comments? Hearing none, public comment, Agenda Item Number 16. Yes, sir. Attorney Officer, Citizens, Satellite Beach. This is just for the three of you? That's just my only question.
Well, any, any of the council members with ten, can attend, the three that are now, we sit on boards that we need to be there on.
So it's budgeted for three of you to go, or for all of you to go?
There's a budgeted fund for us to attend meetings. So it's out of that budget.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Hearing none, bring it back to Council. Any further Council comment?
I, yeah, I, there's no way I could attend, so...
I'm not attending either, I don't, can't take the time off.
Okay. Thank you, Lenore?
Councilwoman McGee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Did you call my name?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 17, Take Action on Partnering with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Courtney?
Yes, this is related to the discussion we had a couple council meetings ago, and we're trying to determine how we're gonna move forward with the adaptation areas that we had initiated with Conference of Plan Policies on our last amendment round. So this has been evolving over a course of several conversations that we've had with the Regional Planning Council, and then as well as, now we have been involving the Florida Institute of Technology. And basically, we are looking for a grant to begin a coastal resiliency planning strategy that will begin, that will basically start involving the community in identifying issues and create basically a vulnerability analysis, as well as basically a public engagement campaign using social media. So this, the Regional Planning Council wants to basically partner with the city, kind of like as a pilot, really, on, on creating an adaptation action plan, pretty much, as a precursor to actually establishing the areas. So it'd be the next phase in the planning of doing that. It was difficult for us to move right into creating areas without basically bringing the public in first, so that's what our desire was, was to bring the public into the process rather than do it for the public. So that's the strategy we would like to use. It would be a matching grant, the RPC would be the applicant, and we would provide the matching funds. It would be a $10,000 cash match and a $5,000 in-kind match to be provided by both the city and then the Florida Institute of Technology. So that's what we would like to do, is to move forward with that grant process. It's, that's a really tight deadline, and so we needed to move forward very quickly.
Just a comment, I'll take it. Comment from Council, who would like to start?
I have some questions. What's FIT's role in, in this?
FIT would basically be using, would be helping construct the model for the social media and all the public education material that we would be doing, probably, very much likely be helping facilitate all the workshops, you know, and then also be analyzing, helping the RPC analyze all the data when they get it in.
And you said they would be contributing?
That would be the in-kind, yes.
Okay, and then in, in this report, it talks about the GIS data maps addressing sea level rise, inundation scenario, and vulnerabilities. So I see more vulnerabilities in the city are based on the sea level rise?
That's part of the data that they would be using. That would be, yeah, sea level rise is definitely a part of the conversation, certainly.
Okay, well, I have a real issue spending taxpayers' money on sea level rise issues. You know, I think you all, you're all aware of my feelings on the adaptation action area, and it was voted to be put in the comprehensive plan, but now it's, now we're spending taxpayers' money on it. Based on a, on a study that, if I remember correctly when I read the minutes, the city accepted this sea level rise study but never approved it as scientific data or whatever, and I just can't support spending taxpayer money, money on this.
Okay. Mark?
I think this is another perfect opportunity where Satellite Beach thinks outside the box, looks at all of the issues and steps forward and does the things that need to be done for our residents, and I think this is one of those scenarios. And the fact that the past council didn't accept the sea level rise report as being factual or not, you know, I seem to believe that there's some credence in it, and I think that it is there and it is coming, and I think the city needs to be prepared for it, so I'm in favor of going forward with this, and I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to convey this information to the residents of the city and what's going on and have them be a part of it, instead of us just making decisions.
Who's gonna do the grant?
The Regional Planning Council.
You know, on this, sea level is just one little part of it, there's much more to it. And sitting on the Environment Board in Water, the state, we're not the only community that is doing this. This has all of a sudden exploded in the information out there, and it's not that any of these communities, and the talk in this board has been, we're taking this from you, we're taking, they just want to have a plan in place when a disaster happens, and you know, we're inherently mandated to have this plan. So it's just a step in the process, and it's not just sea level. Sea level is just a part of it, and if hurricanes, other natural disasters continually hurt an area, there needs to be a plan, and it, the state is looking at it very closely. I think it's good.
Tell me, would we approve the partnership with the East Coast, with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council for grant application for the FDIP Coastal Partnership Initiative Grant for coastal resilience planning and approve the required match of $10,000 cash and $5,000 in-kind services for a total of $15,000 match from the city.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilwoman Montanaro. Any further discussion from Council? Open it up for public hearing. Yes, sir.
Charlie Graham, Satellite Beach, one question, it says in, at the end, it's, it's a one-year study, I guess, proposed from July 1, 14 to June 30, 2015. The conclusion of the study, is there any estimated time to get the final report back to City of Satellite Beach?
That we would have to...
The study goes till June 30, the 2015.
Right.
After the, after the study is completed, is it, you know, is it three months to get the report, is it six months, is it a year?
No, it would be within that timeframe, that's what's due to the grant agency.
So you will have the report back by the end, by the conclusion of the time period? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Roger Goodis, resident, Satellite Beach. As was stated by the mayor, this is a process of a step in aggression, and I need to add any inference to that any further. Secondly, when this adaptation was, plan was discussed during the comprehensive plan approval process... It was sold to citizens and sold to everyone that, or perceived to be sold to everyone, that the language is in there to receive grants to bring the study forward. But as usual, grants entail matching, not always, but many times matching of funds and in-kind grants. And then I'd like to, for everyone to consider here, how does this grant, which requires Satellite Beach to spend precious resources, continue the longevity of the chartered city, including economic viability? When there may just be an initial and long-term reduction in property values, and hence a reduction in revenues, and creating a barrier to the young who would like to reinvest in this community and attend schools, where's their economic viability? Thank you.
John?
John Ferguson, 135, table. I really wish I'd printed out the article that I read, I think it was today, yesterday. Basically, if I remember correctly, there was a storm that hit the Northeast just about a year ago named Sandy. Up in New Jersey where it hit, there are still, and I think the number was 26,000 families that aren't in their homes from that storm. It was the perfect storm, not of TV-type fame or movie-type fame, but you had an interesting meteorological phenomenon, but it happened right after the federal flood insurance program got modified by Congress. And so this article listed some of the horror stories. People that, the insurance companies, after a year, are still fighting, and so the people so they could rebuild, finally use their money, tear down their house, and a week later they get the check from the insurance company to repair it. Of course, now it doesn't build them a new house. Other people that rebuilt their house, but they didn't elevate it. And, you know, there are these separate articles about things like, and there, they had one about a local resident that bought some land somewhere in interior in the state, and so instead of $450 of flood insurance, it suddenly went to like $2,500, and they couldn't afford it. And the trouble is, it's so high that nobody can afford to buy the house, and so they're stuck, they've got a piece of property they can't even sell, but they can't insure it. And so the intent here, and I really find it bizarre that people oppose this process, the intent is to get ahead of all this bullhockey and actually have a plan that says, here's how we're gonna handle these things, so you don't get caught. And I don't see how having a plan is going to harm anybody's property values. It just, it's really bizarre. So the point is, I find it interesting that just a day or two ago, you know, I saw this thing that people didn't plan, they spent billions, and they're still billion short of getting healthy. And if we don't do something, we could very well, no guarantee, but we could very well be in the same position next year, 20 years from now, doesn't matter.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hearing none.
Dana Abrams, Satellite Beach, you inspired me to get up here, John. How many of you have flood insurance?
This is not a question-and-answer session.
Yeah, you need to stick to the comment on this agenda item.
My point is, is that I'm one of the people, John, I'm one of the people that is prepared, okay? I have flood insurance, all right? And I pay a lot of money for it. Now, you people, you live on Tortoise Island, you should have...
To me, please, sorry, don't...
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The point is, is that if people do not prepare for this, then they're gonna face the consequences, all right? People that live a mile away from the beach, or a mile away from the river, they need to have flood insurance. If they don't, and we have an issue, there's gonna be a big problem, because all the water's gonna go in the middle of the city, because that's the bowl. I'm 14 feet, I don't know what we are right here. Do you know what we are right here?
I don't think we sit in a flood plain, but this is not the deal with that.
It will be when it changes.
Thank you. Further comment? Hearing none, closed public comment. Council? Um, we have a motion? Yep. Any further comments?
Yeah, I have additional comments. I, you know, I live here, I've looked at the Jersey Shore in, in New Jersey, I get it, there are hurricanes, there are nor'easters, there, there are FEMA maps which determine where our flood zones are. Right now, there are no flood zones in Satellite Beach. But then you put a hypothetical sea level rise on top of our community, which I don't believe in, I don't, you know, the sea may retreat, it may, you know, the data may change in a few years, and, and the study might come out and say the sea, sea level's retreating. I'm not supporting, I'm not spending taxpayers' money on this issue.
Thank you very much. Any further comment? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman McGee?
No.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to, motion carries for one. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 18, Agenda for Regular Counts, next regular count will be in November 6.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the next meeting, you will have the South Beaches Coalition Agreement on the agenda. You also have an ordinance, actually, it's a small-scale amendment for the property located at 1753 Highway 1A, that's the, Mr. Allison's property. You will also see the second reading for the fertilizer ordinance. You'll see a first reading for the ordinance amending the fiscal year 1213 budget, that's the end-of-the-year ordinance we typically do to true up the revenues and expenditures. You're gonna see a first reading on the Right-Away Vacation Procedures Ordinance. We will have an agreement for you to approve between us and the soccer club regarding a donation. And then Councilwoman McGee requested this item be on the agenda to get an Attorney General opinion on dual office holding, so that will also be on your agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further agenda items? Please get with our city manager in a reasonable amount of time.
I would like to see a proclamation regarding Veterans, Veterans or Veterans Day in November, something similar to that.
If you would, please, if you would please, get that to our city manager, and we can do it next time.
Do you, do you have a sample, or do you want us to come up with that? You just wanna have something for that?
Yes.
Fine, thank you, we'll do it. Any further comment from Council on additional agenda items? Okay. Hearing none. Any further business to come before this council? Hearing none, meeting's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.
Midnight council meetings every time, to eight o'clock council meeting. It's late for me.